Let the record reflect that the meeting for the town center economic development development commission is called to order. Special meeting is called to order at on March, on Tuesday, March eleventh at six P M. Thank you very much. Uh, Link, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Michelle.
Present.
Commissioner Karaskio.
Present.
Commissioner Ghuli, absent. Commissioner Hudgens.
Present.
Commissioner Riley.
Present.
Um, thank you much. Establish that we do have a co president to conduct this meeting. We're gonna move on. Uh, to item three on the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve two special meetings? Uh, one that was on, on January first, January twenty first, twenty twenty five, and the other one was on February eleventh, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hudgens. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. It's been second. Any, um, discussion, changes? Seeing none, hearing none. Uh, orders in favor of both. Meeting minutes as presented, signified by said, aye.
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 Uh, the chair of what's aye, the motions carry, uh, carry unanimously. Item four on the agenda is public comments. Anyone present with public comments? No one signed up? Thank you very much. So let's move on to item five. Work session with Goman York. A revised plan presentation and discussion. This is revised based on the input we received. At the public meeting we had in February. Um, professor.
Thank you, chairman. Uh, members of the committee. For the record, Don Poland with the firm of Goman York Property Advisors. And we are your consultants for the creation of this town center economic development plan and chapter one thirty two. Uh, municipal development plan. Uh, I apologize for the late submission of these documents to you. Uh, and I also apologize for the canceling of our last meeting. All of these delays are related to me and no one else. I go many York. Uh, had some eye surgery that had to be taken care of on a short notice, so that's why the delays occurred. That puts us about a week behind where I would like to be right now. And once again, I apologize for that. Uh, with that said, the document you received, I believe Monday morning. If my timing is right, yes. My days are blurring together, sorry. Uh, is kind of a refashioning of a document that you received back in either November or early December. Where I started framing kind of what the plan would entail and so forth. And over time, uh, through our various activities, whether it be research of existing conditions, the public outreach programs. The most recent public, uh, meeting from last month and so forth. We have continually refined kind of our thoughts and ideas and strategies related to the center. So, uh, this document is kind of created as a bunch of one or two pagers. That kind of stand on their own, and I just wanna provide a summary of what's in there. Uh, and then I guess at the end of each page, I can ask you guys if you have any questions or comments. So the first page, once again, you guys have seen this in multiple forms, is just kind of the general findings related to the town center. And the challenges, related to the challenges there confronting the town center. Big picture wise, you know, your town center is not awful, uh, but it has some challenges. We've worked in places that are much more struggling and so forth. That's what I mean by saying it's not awful. Uh, and but ultimately, it's gonna take, which kind of the final bullets there at the bottom emphasize. It's gonna take for you guys to kind of be intentional and do specific things. To reposition it to actually compete. So with that, I'll say, you know, any questions or comments related to the findings? And probably most specifically, anything you think I missed that you think should be added to that.
Any questions from our colleagues on the commission?
None of mine.
Looks like we are moving on.
Sure. So then the page two is, uh, really about the big picture. Kind of first half of the document we're producing, uh, the economic development strategy, uh, for the center. This is kind of the general overview of the entire center and things that you guys should engage in. In the attempts to reposition the center and make it more competitive, more vibrant, more prosperous. Uh. And as a greater focal point in the community. So in this, we lay out everything from, you know, attention to detail on building designs. To landscaping of public spaces, to the promotion of things like mixed use development, including both. You know, commercial and residential, uh, encouraging, you know, multifamily in and near the town center. Providing greater flexibility within zoning, uh, providing public and shared parking within the center. Uh, creating unique and identifiable spaces, especially the town green, programming the green, uh, so forth and so on. These are kind of all the things that can systematically be engaged in. Uh, and implemented to kind of move the center, uh, into a more posi- positive position. So any questions, comments, or thoughts there?
I think we're good.
Good. Uh, the next one kind of plays off of that prior one, kind of the investment in the public realm. What you as the community should be investing in. So there's two types of landowners in the center. There's the public landowners that you guys, you know, all the public properties that you own. Including, you know, street rightways and sidewalks and so forth. And then all the properties that are in private ownership, whether those be retail establishments or churches or what have you. Other people own them. So we kind of break this down into two areas. The investments you can make as the public to improve the center. And that's what pages three and four get at. You've seen, uh, page four previously, uh, a bit of a further refinement on numbers. Kind of adjusting for inflation, uh, but ultimately, public investment into, uh, the public realm within the center. I would categorize this as a ultimate wish list. It's not something that we're gonna outright say, you need to do this tomorrow. Uh, but I think you have kind of a five year maybe strategy here. To slowly, you know, start working on and implementing some of these things. I know also from previous meetings that some things are already in discussion, the meeting with D O T. The bus shelters and so forth, and maybe there'll be help from the state in that sense. Uh, so that maybe all these costs aren't yours. But this is kind of a roadmap to improving the public realm within the core. Uh, of the center, of the community, of the center of the center, uh, to create a more aesthetically pleasing. And functional space. So once again, I'll pause there, chairman.
Sure. Uh, any questions before? I have a quick comment or quick question. Anyone?
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm not sure was it there before, but if it was, I probably wasn't thinking at the point, the town hall paving, it's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um. Could that be, could that be waited upon? That's a lot of money that could be set aside versus this.
Yeah.
Saving that area.
Yeah, and there, there's two things with that. One is, yeah, I wouldn't put that as a priority. I think some of the sidewalk stuff, bus shelters. You know, the stuff that makes the space more inviting and usable is more important than maybe the town hall center there, uh, the parking area. That being said, also, in the redevelopment concept for across the street. We conceptualize relocating the entrance to the town hall parking lot to the west a bit. And theoretically, when, if and when that were to occur. That could also address the paving of the front area there. I'll also say that paving recommendation from me has dated back to probably about two thousand sixteen. In various forms and things that we've done related to the town center. And since the painting of the, that area, I'm not saying the pavement has improved. It's still the same, but actually, the aesthetics and appearance are better now. Uh, there was a lot of cracking, a lot of chipping. There was a lot of sealant put down to hold it together, and then the painting has kind of lessened the aesthetic negative appeal of it. Uh, so yeah, I don't view it as a pressing issue, and you can kind of wait and see in the context of, you know, what goes on with. Across the street and maybe an entranceway realignment.
And I just did have one comment for the shared working connections below.
Yep.
That was taken from the first go around of looking at this, and the reference to Rite Aid and the funeral home should be updated.
Oh.
As we do, it's a, it's a Walgreens now instead of a Rite Aid.
Right.
No funeral home, at least that I am aware of on Jerome.
Yeah, that was actually.
That one, I saw it the last time, and I forgot to, to mention it, but seeing it again.
Yep, my apologies. One, I knew on the Rite Aid. That dates back to the, uh, TIF plan.
Yeah, that's what I.
And then, for whatever reason, I've always thought that Harris Salon and Spa, in my head wrongly, has been a funeral home, and I don't know why.
Before then, it was insurance.
Yeah, so.
Don't know how, don't know why.
Yeah, so.
It does have that kind of.
That kind of appeal.
Entrance and exit.
So, thank you. I will make sure those are corrected.
Um, you mentioned earlier that like the repaving of the, uh, town hall was not a, a priority necessarily. Is there a way prior to us finalizing, um, a recommendation to the council? That we can almost like get a color coding, like a red, yellow, green, right, of what should be priority? Or would you suggest is priority over other things and what can, for lack of a better term, be on like the back burner after the priority stuff gets done?
Yeah, I can definitely do a kind of short, middle, and long term, uh, prioritization recommendation. As part of the final plan as it comes to you.
Thank you.
I, I think it's fair to say it's all a priority. It's just a matter of timing.
Right.
When we start saying what's a priority, what's not, then people, you know, stuff that's not so hot, people don't look at it. But they all important to be there. It's just a matter of when, when they have to be done. It's just timing.
Absolutely. What to spend money on first, really, right?
Yep.
Yeah, the only question I had was, um, as I read this, um, some of the, especially on, um, page three, page four. It's Jerome Avenue parking. Uh, I know, I know the, the, the bigger plan. Uh, have us moving Jerome Ave- Jerome Avenue around. Can that be incorporated into the bigger plan as opposed to the town paying for it? Or does it have to be?
Yeah, so, some of the Jerome Ave parking is conceptualized on the south portion of Jerome, down around Republic. Uh, anything that was in here, and I'd have to go back and relook, uh, and refresh my memory. Anything on the north side, yeah, I would say incorporates in with the bigger plans or ideas for the north side of the road.
Both north and south, it has both.
Yeah, so, yep. I can, uh. Just as with the funeral home and Rite Aid, I can refine there.
I was wondering, where, where is your funeral home in town center? I mean, I spent a good half an hour just figuring out where did I miss something? I'm serious? Or is maybe, maybe there's a new business coming into town?
I get an idea stuck in my head and it just doesn't go away.
Alright, moving on to page five, right?
Yes. Uh, so then page five is the, uh. Is the strategy for private property investment, you know, we can't tell property owners what to do. We can't say, you have to invest in your property. You have to do a facade. You have to repave your parking lot. We can't make them do any of that. So what this strategy frames here is actually a process of engaging the property owners in a discussion. Around the town center and investments and kind of, you know, the town leveraging its investment, saying, you know. We're in this for the long haul. We're committed to it. We're gonna make these public improvements to, uh, you know, benefit the town center. And we would like you as property owners to also make investments, uh, in your properties. You know, that we do this collectively. And then, um. Yeah, so let me stop there. I thought this was a continuation one. So this basically lays out, you know, that process of engaging, uh, the property owners.
So, hey, Don, you, you, you send this committee, who would be do, who would be engaging? You said a town.
The town.
Uh, any particular, um, part of the town that you recommend is most, is best positioned to do that?
In one sense of it, it's, it's a leadership role by this committee. Uh, you know, you guys are the Town Center Economic Development Committee and Development Authority. So you guys would be in the leadership role, uh, and then town staff, especially John's department, sorry, John. Uh, would be key in this. I think the manager's office, uh, is a part of it. The communications office is a part of it. And I think in parts, uh, through our other work with the community that Goman York would be a part of it.
So, so we need to have a whole strategy around engaging with the, the communication, visiting them.
And, and that's where I said, you know, you can view this document as kind of an executive summary of ideas. And, uh, by the end of next week, we'll be issuing a full plan that will flesh out greater details. Under each of these bullet items on all of these pages, not just this one.
Is that the plan we're gonna vote on to go to the council?
Yes.
That's that next Tuesday?
Not by next Tuesday. We'll have it by, to you by the end of the, we'll do a schedule at the end. I'll, I'll have a schedule for you at the end. I don't wanna get ahead of myself there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, my colleagues? No? Thank you.
So then page six is kind of a continuation of the prior page. And I believe it's a list of sixteen or seventeen. I know I say seventeen there. I think I deleted one that was duplicate. Uh, it's a list of approximately sixteen properties. Is it sixteen more? I saw you counting. Yeah, a list of approximately sixteen properties. That we have identified in the center as kind of opportunity properties. And all of them, we have discussed at various times in differing level of details. So the office building on the south side, southeast, on the south end of Jerome, on the east side. Is one of them. The police station is another one. The office building just south of Republic is another. The up there, the little cul-de-sac with the six office buildings, I believe off of Bloomfield Ave. Is another one of those properties identified. The properties within the triangle between Tunksis Park and Winton Berry. All the properties in that block, other than the Seneca ones, are identified there. Uh, the tax. The tax business property that's kind of deteriorated further down on Park Ave, near the rail, nearer to the railroad tracks. Is identified there. So just giving you kind of an overview, all these properties that we have discussed over the course of this. Have been identified as having opportunities. And in that sense, while any property from the big picture economic development strategy. Uh, any property within the boundary of the town center that we've identified is, you know, fair game. For whatever, uh, these properties kind of get elevated to a place of priority for opportunities. So in the context of the idea of engaging property owners and trying to get them to come along. That property on Jerome, the office building, you know, I think is a prime candidate of a property owner. That should be reached out to early and engaged and by the town and talked to. About opportunities for that property. And this following page, page seven, is a continuation of that. And a discussion of kind of some of the tools that you have.
Don, before we go to page seven.
Sure.
Page six, um, I didn't see anything on Mountain Road. You know, past the library, is, and you, you, you go down Jerome all the way down to that brown. You know, that's quite an unattractive office building, and you go up, um, Bloomfield Ave. Uh, with the office park with six buildings, but, uh, but you're not going past, you're not going west. Of, um.
Yep.
Of, um, uh, Bloomfield and Tunksis Avenue, you know, past the library and past the parking lot for the library. And you have that little development in there, um, Isaacs and then.
Yep.
So, I remember Walgreens, you did mention that, uh, that little plaza may need an, uh, facelift. Is there any reason why it's not on this list?
Just because of me. Uh, ju- I, I've been going back and forth on it, and it was actually in here as an address. And I guess in that moment, uh, I keep on struggling with the west side, uh, the other side there. Out Mountain Road, uh, limited opportunities to do things. Uh, so I've been going back and forth, but yeah, I, I can shift Isaacs, that property, not Isaacs itself, but that property into this. And that's causing me to once again reconsider the other plaza next to it. Where I think at one point I did kind of feel there's an opportunity, maybe for a pad site addition to it, for some additional commercial there. So I gladly revisit and enter those two properties into here.
I'm, I'm just wondering why it was in there. I'm not telling you have to include it. Uh, you, the town is, is investing a lot of money in the, uh, in the, uh, putting a library there and a lot of.
Yep.
Aesthetically improving it, so it's probably fine it and.
Yep. Definitely aging.
It's, it's, it's dated, alright, and, uh, okay.
Yep, uh, I'll definitely revisit, so I appreciate it. Uh, so that following page, page seven, really gets at kind of some of the key incentives that you have. Uh, tax abatements, tax increment financing district, which also allows for credit enhancements. The TIF stuff is really good for large stuff, you know, someone doing a facade improvement on a, uh, on a plaza. Isn't gonna come in through the TIF or the credit enhancement provisions. Your tax abatements can be a way of not putting cash out. That is the town not coming up with money, so oftentimes, communities create, uh, grants or loan funds. For facade improvements, and basically, you know, you'll give a low interest loan or a grant of fifteen thousand dollars. To help a property owner update their facade and so forth. Uh, another way of doing that without actually putting out the cash, having to come up with another pool of money. Would to be, would be to use the tax abatement statute, which allows you to fix the value of real estate. For set times. So you could simply develop a, you know, an, a. Property improvement policy around TIF that basically says. If a property makes an investment in excess of X amount of dollars. Or in excess of X amount, the percentage of the value of the property. That the town is willing to fix the assessment for a period of three or five years. That from doing that investment, they're not gonna instantly get taxed on it, you know, next year. Or in three years or whatever. So there's other levers you can kind of use there. Rather than coming up with money to run loan funds or grants and so forth and so on. So the intent here, once again, in the more detailed plan, is to provide a greater explanation of, you know, those tools. And what's there for you to actually do as a way to try and incentivize, uh, property owners to make some investments, so.
Uh, I appreciate the description of each one of these, but not most folks are finance folks like you and I are. So it, it's, but when people hit tax, tax abatement, tax, uh, the TIF and C E A, that, it's foreign to them.
Yep.
Even reading it, they may have a hard time processing because it's, it's not something they do. So as you go, can you just kind of, uh, for the public who may be watching this now or later on. Just kind of give a real example, and, you know, this property owner invests this.
Sure.
Assessment values this, and the town gives an abatement for next three to five years.
Yep.
And how does this impact the business owner? And also, how does it impact the town?
Yep.
At a very high level.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so very, just gonna do a very hypothetical. Let, let's say you had a building that was valued at. Uh, I don't know, a million dollars. And the assessed value then, based on seventy percent of market value, would be seven hundred thousand dollars. And now this property owner is willing to do, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollar investment in their facade. They're gonna redo the whole facade of the building, uh, or another way of looking at that, they're gonna do an addition. They're gonna expand the size of the building. In either scenario, the improvement to the facade. Or the addition to expand the building would likely add value to the property. So let's just say for round numbers, the one point, the one million dollar property now maybe has a market value of one point. One million dollars, let's say. And so now the assessed value goes from seven hundred thousand, I can't do the math that quickly on my feet. But say, seven hundred and thirty thousand becomes that assessed value. The mill rate is then a ta- it's then applied to the assessed value to come up with the taxes. That the town, that the property pays. So if anyone can do math really quick for me. Uh, I can do it with a calculator. So if we take, let's just say, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And I'm gonna do roughly. Roughly thirty five mils, you know, roughly thirty five mils. That property would pay twenty five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars in, uh, property taxes. The difference between the pre-improvement value and the post-improvement value would essentially be fixed. You'd say, we're gonna hold your property at the pre-improvement value for three years or five years. Uh, and that's what you're gonna be taxed on for value for that period of time. It would probably work out in that scenario on a hundred thousand dollars. You know, you're not talking a ton of money. Uh, point zero three five, you know, you're probably talking about thirty five hundred dollars per year. So that per, that property would save, say, three thousand, thirty five hundred dollars per year in taxes. Over three years or five years. So three times three, you know, is ten, five, and sixteen. So between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. So, you know, that's, basically, you're giving them. A fifteen percent incentive on the hundred thousand dollar investment that they made. Uh, you never have to take money out of your pocket to do that. You don't have to come up with those funds. You're just freezing that assessment. And, uh, and you're not losing anything. You're still getting the same tax value as you are today. Over the next three to five years, when it then expires, and then you would start capturing that new value. So.
For three years, there's an opportunity cost for the town.
Right.
Town's giving up some money for three years.
Yep, yep.
So the town, you know, that fifteen grand would have been in town's budget to pay for school.
Right.
He's five kids maybe, so.
Right, and tha- that's the one thing to remember about the TIF. The, the, so the TIF district is another mechanism similar to a tax abatement. It just applies, it's just the procedure of how it applies. But in the TIF district, basically, tax increment financing is the increment difference between current value and future value. So you have a million dollar property that's, say, dilapidated. You're gonna tear it down. And build something new and bigger that's then gonna be worth ten million dollars. So the property continues to pay the tax value on the one million dollars, and then for the period of the TIF. The tax value on the difference between the one million and the ten million is the increment. And that value is captured to either pay a bond that's helping to fund that project. Or to abate taxes on the back end to help stabilize it. Or in the form of a credit handsome agreement, the developer would come up with that nine million dollars and fund. The developer would come up with that nine million dollars in funding and you would pay them back. With the increment over the length of the TIF deal. This is, this is the point I wanna make though, without getting, without doing all that detail I just did. Is at the end of the day, the TIF district provides a mechanism to incentivize and fund development within the center. And it does so in a way, once again, that you're not necessarily reaching into your pocket. Even if you do reach into your pocket to issue a bond, you're then capturing that new revenue coming in to pay that bond. So in theory, you're not coming up with new dollars, the development itself is funding the bond. The the issue though, on the townwide level, when you start using those mechanisms. You're capturing that tax value in the center and putting it back into the center. So that tax value and revenue is no longer funding the general budget. It's funding directly into the center. So I think you were kind of getting at that a little bit with the abatement, that you're foregoing some revenue that could be used elsewhere.
There's an opportunity cost for the town.
Right.
So the uh so I just wanted to make sure, go back to TIF, uh based on your documents and.
Yep.
My own reading, the town would issue bonds.
Yep.
Right, to pay for the entire project.
Or portion thereof.
A portion of it, a second combination, and the town will continue to tax you based on your current.
Yep.
Or the old value of the property.
Yep.
And the difference that incremental, whether it's a million dollars or ten million or a hundred million dollars. The town, the town paid for that there, but the property owner would pay that back to the town taxes.
Right.
That tax, that would be dedicated to paying back the bonds.
Right.
And uh yeah, those G O, are they are they general obligation bonds or are they revenue bonds when town or issues them?
They they can be either, they're they're, I believe, and I'm not a bond expert. But I believe the general, the general bonds are more favorable to the municipality. And there's higher risk in the special bonds. So typically, uh a municipality, if you are full in and supportive and want this to do this, you do it under the general obligation. Cause the full weight of the municipality's credit is behind those. There are times where towns go with the special revenue bonds where. I think the development's as much on the hook as the municipality and so forth, and you pay higher interest rates, so. I'll save that for later, my next.
I just wanna make sure, tho- thi- this is a complicated transaction, make sure, and uh we're gonna vote on this.
Yep.
And and we're gonna possibly put the town of Bloomfield on the hook with this stuff. I wanna make sure the public know what we are. Uh what we are talking about and the commitment that we are making on their behalf.
Yep.
And we may know what it is, but I'll make sure everybody understand what what we are doing, what we're voting on.
Yep, and if I could just state, just for the record, cause I think it's important, that moving forward. Every step of this process would have public meetings and public hearings and votes. So you know, your first vote will be on adopting a plan. Your a later important vote may be on acquisition of property. And then when you get into the nuts and bolts of a development, you would then have votes on the TIF district. You would then have votes on bonds, you would then have e- every single step of the way is gonna be in public view. And done through a process with one or more town agencies voting to approve those actions. Thanks. So then, the next, I was gonna say slide, the next page, page.
Can you talk about the credit enhancement as well?
Oh, yeah, so my apologies. The credit enhancement agreement is is a provision within the TIF statute that's allows. It's real, it's really the same mechanism as the TIF, just it's structured differently in the sense that. One million dollar property, ten million dollar future value, you capture the increment of the nine million dollars in between and the tax value of it. And then that tax value is committed uh to a payment. The difference here is, the credit enhancement agreement is an agreement between the town and the developer. And basically, you are committing to that developer that you will capture the TIF value. Uh that the the value of the TIF will be captured to pay the debt related to those improvements. They take this, the credit enhancement agreement letter to their lender. As an equity investment into the development, that you have committed. You know, ten million dollars, let's say, over ten years to pay off the public infrastructure improvements or whatever. And they're using that as credit. That million dollar project, the town is investing, a hundred million dollar project. The town's investing ten million into it. And then they're gonna have their equity investors and then they're gonna be asking their lender for debt going into it. They're showing their lenders that they already have a ten million dollar deal with the town. To help pay for those public improvements, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, one, one question. Now, what about this, you have a property where um. The owner's not, not interested at all, they don't wanna play uh play ball with it. Now, does chapter one thirty two uh get executed or if it's a, it's it, it's just, does that get executed? Chapter one thirty two?
So that's where I'm going next. When when we move on to the next page, uh if I can move on, if that was, okay.
Oh, okay, um John, go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to note that there are thresholds in the town charter requir- on bonding requiring actual referendums. Um I'm not sure what the levels are, but I think almost any bond of any significance that the town wants to issue. Uh will require a referendum.
John, even the, even in the TIF, even in TIF and CEA?
I believe so, I think that any, you know, I'm not, I don't think the uh the charter discriminates between or designates between. Uh types of bonds and whatnot, and I'm not sure whether the, whether the charter or the state statutes would prevail. Um we need to get an opinion from the town attorney, but I do know that um there are definite thresholds in the charter for referendums for bonds.
Okay.
We can look into that further with the town attorney also.
If the state supersedes the town charter, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll follow up, um uh with with town attorney and get his opinion on this.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
So then, uh. So page eight starts, so. This planned document that's ultimately gonna come to you for a vote. Uh the first portion of it is gonna be this general economic development strategy for the center. Which is everything up until this point through page seven. This second portion of that document is going to be. A chapter one thirty two municipal de- development plan, which is a statutory provision in state law. That allows a redevelopment authority, which the TES, the Town Center Economic Development Commission is. To engage in a bunch of activities. Uh related to the acquisition, development, ownership, leasing, so forth and so on of real property. Uh it provides greater abilities for engaging in the development of. Real property than a town typically has, so it's a special authority granted to you guys as that. Uh authority, and in that, it allows you to acquire properties. Uh for development or redevelopment and so forth, so. On the previous page in the first half, where we identified approximately sixteen. If we incorporate the properties to the west there, approximately eighteen properties as opportunities. A handful of those properties identified previously as opportunities are now identified here. On page eight as kind of specific opportunities. That is, they relate to what will be identified as the municipal plan area. The chapter one thirty two municipal plan area, and that is the properties bound by. Park Ave to the south, Tuxus Ave to the west, and Luger Town Green. Uh Winton Berry to the north and the railroad tracks to the east. Down to Seneca and then Jerome becomes the eastern boundary. So those properties that are both on Seneca and Jerome are not included, it's only the depot lot to the north that's included in that boundary. That area will be identified as a municipal development plan area. And that plan or that portion of the overall plan. Will follow the statutory requirements, authorizing you as the com- committee. As the redevelopment authority, with the authority to enact the various powers. Of chapter one thirty two to acquire, own, operate, develop, sell. So forth and so on, properties.
So do I just, uh so that we're all on the same page, uh two Tuxus Avenue, is that the town green?
That is the town green.
Well, those who are land, talent. Uh eight thirty six, eight thirty six Park Ave and M, that's the plaza across the street.
Yeah, eight thirty six A.
Entire plaza?
Eight thirty six M is the plaza itself and eight thirty six is the bank property.
Sixty four Jerome.
The depot site.
Depot site.
Up against the railway, the vacant lot against the rail line.
And turn that Winton Berry?
The package store property.
And twenty forty seven Jerome.
Uh the gas station at the corner of Jerome and Park Ave.
With that triangle, you may discuss everybody, everything included in there.
Correct.
Including uh up to the rail, up to the railroad.
Correct.
The east side of uh Jerome going down that way, okay.
Yep.
Alright.
So that's the redevelopment plan area. The following page on, or the municipal development plan area, my apologies. Uh the following page, page nine, then lays out kind of the findings. And findings and, you know, the findings and reasons. Uh in summary, for the municipal development plan and those properties. As part of the larger document that we're drafting and will get to you guys next week. There is actually statutorily a section that lays out all the findings. You as a commission need to make that go beyond these, there are things like consistency with the town plan and conservation development. Consistency with the regional plan and conservation development, so forth and so on. Far more details will be laid out in the full document. But this gives you a summary of the very specifics related to that. Uh bounded municipal development plan area.
This is where the heavy lifting is gonna be.
Absolutely.
So it's important that uh uh as a committee, we understand this is gonna be really um intense. A reading, a lot of meetings to make sure that we are care now, uh care enough our responsibilities. And so that we don't trip and miss something. I'm sure with you and your team there and eh that's not gonna happen. You guys guiding us, but I I just, I wanna implore my my colleagues on the committee. Uh be ready, this is really gonna be heavy and lift, heavy lifting and intense.
Yep. And.
It's a lot of public meetings as required by law for everything that we're gonna do.
Right, and I'll talk about some procedure at the end here. So then, the following page, page ten, uh when we met with you guys in executive session. That was to discuss kind of preliminary thoughts and ideas on financing and development. Of property acquisition uh and so forth. And the redevelopment in that municipal plan area. Since then, uh we've had meetings with town leadership and staff. Uh we've also gone back to the drawing board multiple times, we've continued to refine numbers. And I believe when we last met with you, we had approximately. A hundred and sixty some odd residential units and we had eighty five thousand square feet of commercial space. We've played around with numbers, if you look at the finances on scenario one and two. Which we discussed previously, the IRRs, it's the commercial portion of the development that is the weakest. And it's the commercial portion of the development that pulls all the numbers down. Uh so we've refined back from eighty five thousand square feet to sixty five thousand square feet. The plan recommendation is gonna be, we've refined back to that in these numbers to kind of show some things. The plan recommendation is gonna be for commercial development somewhere between fifty and eighty five thousand square feet. Uh for that site, uh we think that's a reasonable range. Uh we think that the lower square footage will work better with the parking challenges. Uh that have been noted in previous discussions around the limited parking around the commercial sites. Uh we've also played with a three story version of the depot site residential units. And we've played with a five story, a four and a five story version of the depot site residential units. Uh and while I know this, everyone's concerned about height, that heirloom effect I've talked about. The fact is, the greater density, the greater re- residential units uh improves the development financials overall. Uh so I think that needs to be considered. Now, the one key thing I wanna point out here at this point is, all of this is conceptual. In the context of the chapter one thirty development plan requires us to plan for a development. Requires us to do the finances for the development, as we've shown here in summary, as part of its incorporation. If the town is to adopt the chapter one thirty plan, if the town is to follow the other authorities in chapter one thirty two. And ultimately acquire these properties. Uh the town would then most likely go out to an RFP process. To attract interested developers to do the redevelopment of the site. It would be, the RFP would be issued with the conceptuals that we've come up with. Kind of, these are how we've envisioned the layout, these are how we've envisioned the uses. These are how we've envisioned the square footage and the units. But ultimately, whoever the selected developer is in the end. Is going to return to the town with a proposal that is inspired by what we've done here. But is their own proposal for what can be achieved there. Uh so I just want you to be aware, like, this is not cast in stone. That like those exact buildings, those exact square footages, those exact units. Uh and that's why I think the recommendation of the plan needs to be like fifty thousand to eighty five thousand square feet. Of commercial space is what you're looking for, that between a hundred and forty and two hundred units. Or a hundred and sixty and two hundred units of residential is what you're looking for. Uh and now frame the RFP process, but in the end, ultimately, you're gonna get a proposal back to you. And the other things included in the RFP would be things like the relocation, the reorientation location of Jerome. The closing of Winton Berry uh to expand the uh town green, the town greens included in here. Uh because also probably part of other currently privately owned lands would be used to also expand the town green. As we've identified that as a key asset, as an undersized asset, that it needs to be more and offer more to the community, so.
Thank you, uh any questions for my colleagues? Thank you. Uh, any questions for my colleagues? This is where, you know, the rub is starting to the road now, so. Any questions? Um. Julio, any questions, Julio?
No, I'm good on mine.
Thank you. You you know, I would. I would expect the town to invite. Uh, respondents to the R F P to come up with strategies, to come up, be creative, be bold, uh we give you framework, but you come with your best plan. So that, so that we pick the plan that's gonna, that's gonna meet our concept, concept, uh conceptual, as you have put it, but the point is. The, I assume this committee is gonna be the R F P review or is it gonna be us and the town um staff? Uh, but however, it's gonna play out the point here, when we put the R F P out, we would expect developers to come in. With their own approach um that's gonna wire us and they could so pick the best person for the job.
At the end of the day, it will be your process. At the end of the day, you guys are the controlling agency. Just remember, in the end, any financial decision. By you guys also needs to be voted on by the commission. But issuing an R F P is your decision, no one else. Selecting the, you know, proposal from the R F P rests with you guys. The financing mechanism, the bonding, the TIF, all that stuff is also gonna require, you know, votes by the councils and others. But at the end of the day, you guys are driving the show. Uh, as far as the municipal development plan goes.
Okay. So um, thank you much. Appreciate the, any. Um. Eleven, sorry, we talked about the process.
Yeah, so I'm.
Talking about it throughout the evening, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna pause on eleven and twelve and go to the document that has a proposed schedule and I'm just gonna talk about the process. In the context of the proposed schedule to you. Uh, I do recognize that everyone, you guys as a committee, uh, the town council. Uh, and the community as a whole is eager to get moving on this. Uh, and I've appreciated the enthusiasm that I've seen on that. That being said, there's statutory provisions as to the procedures that have to be followed in. Uh, this process of adopting the chapter one thirty-two portion of this town center economic development plan. So, as we are today. Proposing to get you a draft next week, uh. Actually, let me, cause I didn't do that. I started counting dates. One second. So we we would get you a draft, uh, targeting the twenty-first, which is a week from Friday. Uh, that being said, how the timelines work, it doesn't really matter if it's Friday or if it's Monday. So I've used Friday's date, just in uh Monday's date, just in case, or the Tuesday day, no, the Monday day to the twenty-fourth, just in case. Uh, when I work the timelines going forward, whether I start with the twenty-first or the twenty-fourth, things stay on the same schedule. So just buying a little time there. We should probably tonight make a decision for this committee to meet. Uh. The twenty, either the night of the twenty-fourth or the night of the twenty-fifth. For you guys to formally adopt the plan as it's provided to you. Uh, uh, no. Thinking about this, accepting the draft as it's provided to you and making the referrals to CROG. And to your town plan and zone commission. By statute, both those entities have to receive the plan. Once you receive the plan. On either the twenty-first or the twenty-fourth, I'm using the twenty-fourth as that date, cause if we send it to you at five o'clock on Friday. It's probably not getting posted to the website until uh the Monday. So that's why the twenty-fourth, I think, is a more reasonable date. But you have to post the plan, the draft plan online for thirty-five days. Before you can hold a statutorily required. Public hearing on it. Also, CROG gets thirty-five days to do their review in common. So that's why we want it posted to the website and referred to CROG basically within a day or two of each other. It's then kicked to the planet, it's also kicked to the planning commission for their review and. Uh, vote on it. They, there is no statutory timeline on the planning commission review. We would hope that town staff. Uh, that supports both this commission, this committee and ultimately the uh town plan committee. Uh, to actually expedite that and move that along and make sure it happens within the thirty-five days that we're playing with. On both CROG and the website posting. That would set us up for you guys hosting a public hearing on the plan on April twenty-ninth. I think the best bet would be to close that hearing and then meet. Within. A very short time period, twenty-ninth, maybe meet on April first, or I'm sorry, May first. To actually do your. Motion for adoption on that plan. Once you adopt it, you then forward it to the council and I've already gone and looked ahead. Their next meeting after that public hearing and your adoption would be May twelfth. Once they adopt, statutorily, it has to be kicked to D E C D for review by the commissioner. And there's no timeframe on that. That being said, I believe you would be able to start some of the procedural stuff. For the next steps of executing the chapter one thirty-two, once the council has adopted and it's been sent to D E C D. So, that is the timeline that we're on. And I know it's a bit lengthy, that thirty-five-day hold for it to be online and that CROG is kind of the biggest length to it. Uh, so.
Is that, is their review, it's either in accordance or it's not?
Yeah.
Come back with, it needs this to be in accordance, that we would have to build in any.
Right, so. So in the plan itself, Justin and myself are working on, the plan requires that. The chapter one thirty-two plan that we're preparing for you requires that we consider the local plan of conservation development and the regional. So we will be incorporating sections that a- address both those documents. And demonstrates how it's in accordance with them. Based on my knowledge of your local plan, your current draft plan and the regional plan, I'm confident that it's going to be in accordance with those things. They then get to review. Yeah, they could come back with a recommendation or something. And that can be incorporated as part of the public hearing testimony. And we could make a tweak in that forty-eight-hour period I'm giving us to tighten things up. I wouldn't expect extensive changes. Most likely, they will find it's in accordance and that's it without comment. Same with your planning and zoning commission in both, in that scenario also.
Do they normally take thirty-five days or could it could be done before?
Well, thi- this is the whole thing. The uh, I would hope it could be done before. We could ask them to. At the end of the day, you're on the thirty-five-day hold for the hearing anyways, so it doesn't really matter. Uh, I think CROG in general has been pretty good in beating their thirty-five days. Uh, so you could probably expect it between like twenty and thirty days reasonably.
Yeah, I mean.
But you just never know, yeah.
My experience lately with them has been much quicker than the required timeframes, um, but to Don's earlier point. Can't do the public hearing regardless, because you have to have it online thirty-five days for the public notice period. Um, so, um, little bit to add into what you were saying, um, the the sections that I've sort of written highlight how. Your plan is in direct compliance with the regional and state and local P O C D. So I wouldn't anticipate them finding any issues, um, but, you know, we have to do it anyway.
Just with the tightness of the timeframes, had to ask the question.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
The 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 bigger question mark, I would say at the end of the day, is when it get, gets kicked to the D E C D commissioner. For review, their review on it. Uh, once again, we will show compliance with the state. Uh, plan and conservation development and so forth. We'll check all the boxes. We'll make sure everything's done. Uh, I just, uh, I've done chapter one thirty plans. I haven't done a one thirty-two. Chapter one thirty doesn't require the D E C D review. This one does. I don't know what to anticipate on that process. And it does say in the statutory language where it requires the referral to D E C D for the commissioner to review and approve. It does actually have language that the commissioner could come back with recommendations for changes. Once again, I highly doubt they would, cause they just, they're not gonna have the intimate knowledge of the town that we have in going through this process. But it's possible, so.
But they got some boxes they gotta check, make sure soon things are done.
Right.
We're gonna make sure those are done.
Yeah, we have a whole checklist we are working from to that. Basically, I broke out the statute into a table. And it's kind of checked the box. We have to do this, we have to do this, we have to do this, we have to make sure the one thirty-two includes all those things so that they can find nothing wrong with it, so.
And the one thing I'll add is the the nice thing with D E C D is in a lot of ways, they anticipate this coming to them, because the grant for this whole project was a D E C D grant.
Hey, um, any, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Don, sorry.
No, no, finish what you're doing and I I wanna just.
I was gonna ask my colleagues.
Relude one thing.
Any more questions? Any, Julio?
Nope.
The last line on that table says property acquisition. Just to know, if you were going to pursue the acquisition of property. Then there is a whole nother statutorily driven process. That you have to engage in for the acquisition of each parcel of land. In indivi- individually. Now, if you were acquiring multiple parcels. Each parcel would require to have a public hearing, but you could combine those all into one hearing. So procedurally, they all have to be dealt with individually. However, they can all be clustered together and all heard in the same night and so forth. But, so there is a statutorily driven process for property acquisition. And then, just so you know, moving forward, exercising all the powers and authorities that you do. When you do key things like issue bonds and so forth and so on, there are statutory authorities that, you know. Determine how you can do that, when you can do that. They determine whether you need a majority vote. In some instances, the town council needs a. Two-thirds majority vote rather than just a simple majority. So we will constantly be driven by the chapter one thirty-two statutes procedurally on everything we do. So I just wanna give you that awareness now, so moving forward, when I come back to you again and say, we have another process we have to follow. You're aware of it and not surprised, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your very uh. Educational and thorough presentation this evening. Appreciate it. Uh, any questions? Oh, no, Mr. Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, two things. One, on your comment on the, on the request proposals you have, or the writers of the R F Q, which are gonna be you. Um, have a lot, basically what you put in there is what you're gonna strive to get back, so you can direct. Specifically in the R F P, uh, what type of responses you want, what you want them to address and what you want them to say. Because you will be specifically writing that R F P, so you can be very specific as to. Uh, the flexibility and the and the types of responses that you're looking for. And then on the um, on the calendar, uh, I will endeavor and probably be successful. Uh, the planning commission will meet whatever um, calendar you need to meet.
Thank you, Don. Uh, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Our next meeting is on March twenty-fourth. Oh, is it March twenty-four or March twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, that Tuesday.
Yep.
Alright.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Alright.
You can get us.
Next meeting will be two weeks from today.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
It's been moved by Lenny. Can I get a second?
Second.
Take him out, Ms. Riley.
Got it before.
All is, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Chair, what's our motion carries unanimously? Thank you very much. Meeting is over. Thank you all. See you guys in two weeks.